Good afternoon, welcome everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative of the Sixth District, and Chairperson of the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, we will reconvene for a work session on City Council Resolution 21-0001-R. And in attendance today, we have the members of the committee. And I see John Bullock of the Ninth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Ramos of the Fourteenth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Ryan Dorsey of the Third District. Councilman Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District. And Councilman Antonio Glover has an excused absence today. And also, members of the President's Office, we have Lucy Font, Staff Assistant for Legislative Affairs.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. And also representing the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Themulus, Deputy Director of Governmental Relations. And also Sophia. Thank you, Sophia. City Council Resolution 21-0001-R, investigative hearing, Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the purpose of inviting the Acting Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, Reverend Staff and the Chair and other members of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission to provide an update on the status of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, including but not limited to information regarding revenue raised each year since passage of the Ordinance 18-215, projects and initiatives funded so far, projects and initiatives in the pipeline to be funded, the spending plan, and ideas for improving the fund. This resolution was introduced on January 13, 2021. A public hearing was held on February 2, 2021. That hearing was recessed. At this work session, the committee will resume discussion of the resolution. As a reminder, public testimony was taken at the last hearing. And remember, this is a work session. And usually, we don't have public testimony at work sessions. But in consultation with the sponsor of the bill, we have four people checked off to testify today. And please limit your testimony to about two minutes so we can resume with the finalization of this resolution. At the last hearing, the Department of Housing and Community Development gave an extensive presentation about how the Affordable Housing Trust Fund operates. That document has been sent to all council members and is available on the City Council's Legistar website. The committee also discussed important topics ranging from funding sources to funds for senior housing, repair, and preservation, very important piece. We were informed that the fund was in the process of preparing an annual report for release to the Mayor and City Council on March of 2021. The Mayor's Office of Governmental Relations was recently directed to distribute copies of the 2021 Annual Report to all council members, and it is also available on the City Council's Legistar website. Fund representatives have been asked to brief today's committee on the following: Funds in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund; expenditure and use of funds; number of housing units produced; number of residents served by the fund; upcoming planning process; and future plans for expanding the funding resources. This resolution was sponsored by Councilmember Ramos. And at this time, we'll have Councilwoman Ramos, if she has any comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for reconvening this hearing, and thanks to my colleagues for being here and taking the time. This, the last time we had this conversation was a little over a year ago, and we wanted to bring it back so that we can get a more complete update, particularly as we're moving into budget hearings as to the performance of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in terms of, you know, how the money is being used and the spending plan, and what's next. So I'm very much looking forward to the report and hearing from the department. I understand Commissioner Kennedy is unable to make it today. So we are joined by others in the department, very able, others in the department who will introduce themselves. And I do appreciate the Chair allowing us to have a little bit of testimony, since testimony unfortunately was limited last time. I think it was my first hearing, and this is my first bill that I ever introduced, so I was learning about how this was all working. So I do appreciate the opportunity. So thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. And what I'm going to do, there's four people that I guess you have that are going to testify, and I think it would be good to go ahead and get those four testimonies in. And that way, agencies or ourselves can kind of respond from also the additional testimony. So these are the four people that can go in order that checked off. We have Matt Hill, and pardon me if I mispronounce your name wrong. Garrick, is that Good or Gord?
Good.
Good. Mallory Thomas, and Mallory Thomas. And then the other person is Dan McCarthy. So in that order. So we'll go ahead and start with Matt. And you can pull that up, and if you want to take your mask off. If not, that's up to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, committee members. My name's again Matt Hill. I'm a member of the Cities Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission. And a lot has changed since you had that hearing some time ago. Particularly, the revenue for the trust fund has gone up significantly. The trust fund no longer has the deficit that was projected and is now taking in much more revenue, such that the department says there's a $7.5 million surplus from its projection, likely $8.5 million by the end of the fiscal year. So commercial development in the city is alive and thriving and contributing to the trust fund. Two concerns, I just wanted to, well, first, again, thank you to the department. They've been very responsive to a number of requests from the commission members. They've made some programmatic changes. They've recognized that inflation has driven up the costs of development, and they've added money to help cover those costs. And they've also provided additional information that commission members have requested to provide more transparency. We have, still have the monthly meetings. They are still open to the public. And so greatly appreciate that healthy dialogue with the department. Just two concerns to lift up briefly. Prior administration had committed about 39% of the trust fund money to community-controlled, permanently affordable housing through community land trusts. In the latest iteration of the budget for the trust fund, that's down to about 29%. So that's a significant step down, which I am concerned about because the community land trust movement was so instrumental in helping create the fund and advocating for the trust fund revenue source. More broadly, the biggest concern I have with the trust fund at the moment is just moving the money out the door. So the trust fund has taken in about 47 million, and please correct me if I get the numbers wrong, since, in revenue, since it started, essentially collecting money in 2019, it's committed roughly 29 million in funds and spent about 3.4 million. So the amount of money that's actually come out of the trust fund is relatively small, less than 10% of the revenue taken in. And we've had a number of discussions about this in the commission space. We've talked about, okay, what's the process to get from A to B? And where are the slowdowns? And where's the problem in the process that's causing these slowdowns? And the answers are varied and complicated. But at the same time, the bottom line is that, again, lots of money in the trust fund, and only about 10% of it actually expended. And so I just really hope that the department and the council can really focus on this urgent question of how do we allocate this additional, the additional funds that are in the trust fund that have not been committed? And then how do we get the money out the door quicker? Because as we know, there are tens of thousands of families in this city who are on the verge of eviction or facing some sort of homelessness or are homeless. And so the urgency, the need is there, and we have to get the money out the door more quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. And Garrick Good? You can pull that down, too. Thank you. How are you?
Hi, good afternoon. I am Garrick Good. I'm the Executive Director of Northeast Housing Initiative, or NHI. I am here in support of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And on behalf of the board, families we serve in the Baltimore community, we offer support for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We would like to reinforce the importance of using these resources to finance permanently affordable community-controlled housing and to encourage Baltimore City Council and DHCD to explore avenues to move money from award to beneficiaries much more quickly. To date, NHI has been able to provide 11 families with permanently affordable housing homeownership with our first award from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And we have over 35 families going through the housing counseling and training on their homeownership journey. Without this fund, most of these would not be eligible for homeownership. Thank you.
Thank you. Mallory Thomas? Did I say your first name right?
Melanie.
Melon, okay, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair and councilmembers. I'm Melanie Thomas. I'm the Executive Director of the South Baltimore Community Land Trust. And just to reiterate what Garrick and Matt said, you know, as recipients of this Affordable Housing Trust Fund and being instrumental in creating it, we really do want to ensure that the fund continues to support permanently affordable housing options and support systems in place for seniors and all the other things that are specified. So we want to ensure that what we set the fund out to do continues to get done. And one of the barriers, or one of the challenges right now is getting money out of the door. And again, as was stated, there are varying reasons as to why funds are not being moved swiftly. But I'm hoping that with council support as well as department support, and the department has been amazing in walking us through some of the processes, too, but at the same time, putting in place other practices to help things move swiftly so that we can house families. Currently, our project, we have a proposal for 18 homes that we're going to be bringing to the community of Curtis Bay in South Baltimore. And that's going to be really huge because our community has not seen new development for over 20 years. And when we're talking about affordable housing development, we want to continue to help families that are rent burdened right now. They're at the risk and jeopardy of the landlords, where they are seeing increasing rents, and it's being, it's unaffordable, right? So we really need the funds to help bring more housing to the community and help preserve the members that want to stay in Baltimore and give them an opportunity to build equity. So thank you.
Thank you. And Dan McCarthy? How are you?
I'm doing very well. Thank you for having me, Madam Chair and councilmembers. My name is Dan McCarthy. I'm with the Episcopal Housing Corporation. We're a real estate development company that's been operating in Baltimore for 25 years. And in fact, we have recently gotten an award from the trust fund. And, you know, maybe to Matt's point a little bit, it was an early-on investment in a project we're doing to provide housing for extremely low-income folks. And we were able to take those funds and leverage, we got an award of $180,000, and we've been able to, at this point, leverage it to get an additional $1.8 million. Now, we're still about $300,000 short of our goal, but the critical investment that happened early on in the process allowed us to leverage these other funds, and we hope by this summer, we'll be ready to start construction on this project, nine units for people with incomes below 30% of area median income. So one of the things I really want to say about the trust fund is it allows maybe some smaller-scale projects that are at a neighborhood level to be advanced. The city is obviously got some huge projects going on per Consomerset, Old Town being one of them. That's not the intent of these funds. They're able, enables projects at our neighborhood level to move forward. So maybe they're not always the most efficient ones, but they have a layer of equity to them. The projects that get funded by Affordable Housing Trust are really ones that are at neighborhood scale and benefit our neighborhoods. And for that reason, I think it's a huge benefit to the city, and I hope that the council continues to support it at a very high level. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you for your testimony.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Thanks. Dan, thanks for being here. Just, in the scope of your project, the timeline of kind of funding, capitalizing your project, where did the Affordable Housing Trust Fund come in? Early, late, middle?
They were the first, we had identified a property, and we had gotten a contract of sale to purchase it. But the trust fund was the first funds that were in, were able to leverage that with the state of Maryland from one of their programs, and the Harry and Jeanette Weinberg, the Abel Foundation, and the Franz Merrick Foundation have subsequently come into the project.
Cool, that's really great to hear. Thank you.
And just a reminder to the committee, generally, we do not question people that are giving testimony. Usually, their testimony is their testimony, and we take it in. And then you can, if there's private conversations you'd like to have with organizations, you have to take that upon yourself. But thank you. Just a friendly reminder to the committee. Okay, and thank the four of you. You gave some really good added information. At the public hearing, the committee heard from the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, and the Department of Finance. So we're going to like come back to them, and we'll start with, I guess, the presentation from the Housing, Department of Housing and Community Development. And at the last hearing, I think Alice Kennedy did speak, and she's not able to join us today. So we do have Stephanie Murdock. And then you can go ahead and, Stephanie, carry on with who else you have from your agency that would like to speak on this subject.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Commissioner Edwards for our presentation.
Hi, everybody. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. I'm Kate Edwards. I'm the Deputy Commissioner for the Development Division for the Department of Housing and Community Development. Commissioner Kennedy expresses her regrets that she was unable to join us today. But I know that she's watching. I'm joined, well, you already heard from Stephanie Murdock. I'm also joined with, by Stephanie Estrada-L. And Ebony Rector, our project coordinators for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. DHCD stands by our bill report that was submitted January 27, 2021. And we're pleased to have this opportunity to provide an update on the status of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, including the most recent annual report covering the period of the fiscal year '21, which covers July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2021, which you should have received from committee staff. But I'm going to go over some of the updated numbers, some of the funds that are currently available in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and how they've been used to date, and some updates on the housing units produced or planned with the money. So as far as revenue, we have the revenue numbers through March 2022. So the total revenue collected to date, I mean, to March, to the end of March, And the revenue collected in fiscal year 2022, as of March 2022, was $21,143,004. So you can see, a large proportion of that money has been in this fiscal year. So far, we have funded, we have commitments and awards to date. We have $11,404,500 worth of projects that we have commitments to, and that would be through our NOFA process. And that would be both for rental projects and community land trust homeownership projects. And so far of that money, we have expended $1,400,000. We also have funding commitments to consultants. This is for our work with the community land trusts as well as the inclusionary housing. $225,000 going towards that. I'm sorry, that's a different line. That's just for the Grounded Solutions, which is our community land trust. And then we also have a group of commitments, which are transfers. So they're not awarded through our project, through our NOFA process, but they're transferred to different agencies to work on different projects. So we have the Senior Home Ownership, which is actually senior repairs to help seniors who own homes repair their homes. So that's $5,293,066. And of that, we've expended $659,761. Pandemic homelessness, which is $2,750,000. And none of that has yet, well, we have to get updates on that to make, to check on that. We have the Choice Neighborhoods. So this is going to the PSO. That's $4,512,207. $500,000 of that has gone out so far. And then funds allocated, so this represents our updated spending priorities. So we have, for rental supplements, we have $2,949,393 that are going to rental support. And this is going to be short-term rental support assistance. It's still in the current, in the planning process. So this money should, is going to launch. It's going to be with DHCD, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement, Mayor's Office of Employment Development, and the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. And this is supposed to be launched by the end of FY '22. So this money will start getting out the door very soon. We also have the Inclusionary Housing, which is helping to rewrite the Inclusionary Housing legislation. It's a consultant for that purpose. $302,527 expended is $100,000 of that. We have our administrative costs, which come up to about $2 million. The community land trust balance currently is $5,148,406. New construction, this is for a NOFA that we just posted, it's going to be $6 million. We posted that on April 27. And that'll be $6 million available for new construction of rental or preservation of existing rental properties. And then we're also looking with this additional revenue that we've, that has come in above what we were expecting. We're looking to increase, put out a NOFA that would allow for a community land trust to increase their costs because of the construction costs going up. So this will make more money available for that. That's $500,000. And then we're also going to put out another NOFA, and this will be a new type of NOFA. This will be specifically to help community land trusts with their operating costs. This will be $500,000 that'll be available. And currently, we still have a surplus. And because we've gotten so much more revenue this year, so we'll be looking at that, analyzing that, working with the commission going forward to figure out ways to allocate that additional money. We've, some of it, the first half of the year, we've already begun to allocate that in our spending priority, which was updated. But there'll be more money in the months from April through July, and we will work to identify how that will be reallocated. As far as housing units produced, we have, for the community land trusts, for the number of units that are available to households at 30% AMI and below, we have 20 units. And 50% AMI and below is 50 units. As far as rental units, we're going to have, and this is units produced or proposed, so it's the ones that have been committed. Some of them have not yet been built yet.
So, excuse me for a second.
Uh huh, no problem.
The committee has the copy of the fiscal year 2021. Do you know when that's, I know Councilwoman Ramos probably has some questions, but do you know when we're going to get a copy of the?
For the annual report?
Yeah.
I guess I thought it was given out to the committee. You said you don't have it yet?
We have fiscal '21. We just have 2021.
Oh, yes, because 2022 wouldn't be done until October.
Well, we, Madam Chair. So, Councilwoman, yes, go ahead.
So a lot of the numbers that you read, we don't have any paperwork or anything to look at. So will you be submitting that later? Because what you've read is also different than what's online.
Yeah.
In terms of the spending plan.
Yeah, so we can get that to the committee.
Yeah, you can get that.
A copy of these numbers.
Send that to Jennifer Coats and the sponsor.
That would be great, thank you so much.
She'll get it to the committee.
Okay.
I don't know if you want her to read all of these numbers at this point like this.
Okay, I can just go, I can skip ahead of that and go straight to some of the, kind of more responsive to some of the previous testimony.
Sure, I'm interested in the units produced piece, and then you can go into the.
Yeah, that was the last bit of the numbers.
Okay.
Okay. So the rental units produced so far, we have 93 that are under 30% AMI, and 154 that will be at under 50% AMI. And we have the Choice Neighborhoods. So these are the ones within PSO. And that's also six in 30% AMI category, and nine in the 50% AMI. So in total, we'll have 119, which are for 30% in AMI and below, and 213 at 50% AMI. And so far, only 11 of these units have actually been built. So just to talk a little bit about the process for getting the funds out, we have been really conscious of trying to balance the need to, as Dan McCarthy was saying earlier, be in that, be that first in money, be early into the project, because that is hard for projects to get, money that's first in. But also, being aware that we need to get the money out on the street and need to get it moving. But when we are that first in money, which we have been in a lot of cases, there's still a lot of work left to be done on these projects. So the development project process can be a multiple-year process. And so especially for some of these larger projects, or with the community land trusts where they're still in very early stages, they're still identifying sites, there's a lot of steps that have to be taken. And we're working with the groups on their process and trying to meet them where they are. There's been some internal things, too, that we've been working on, and just making sure that we can streamline our grant process, grant writing process as much as possible. It's been a new program that we've gotten up and running, and we've learned a lot in the first two years. And we're really applying that and working to identify a good workflow process for us to make sure that we are being as efficient as possible and that we're able to get the funds out as quickly as the recipients are able to accept the funds. And so some of the projects do have grant agreements, but they're still not quite ready to start drawing down. So you might see where there's commitments, they may even have a grant agreement, but they haven't been able to draw down yet because the project is still waiting on other financing. So they have to line up all their other financing. We are, we also saw early on that there is a need to get some of the money out because some of the projects have pre-development costs. And so we have allowed them to use up to 25% of the award for pre-development costs. This can help them with acquisition. It can help them with some of the construction, some of the plans, but not the actual hard construction. And it's just really important to make sure that they do have all the financing lined up before we start putting that hard construction dollars out because we want to make sure that a project is going to be successful. So that's kind of the needle that we're trying to thread and looking for, constantly looking for ways to improve and open to suggestions, and happy to have this opportunity to talk and answer any questions.
So I have a question. You had mentioned it's a, the process is a multi, multiple-year process. What are some ways where we can shorten that process flow? I think is an important piece.
Yeah, like I said, we've really been evaluating internally what we can do. We have to work with a lot of different agencies. There's a lot of different approvals as far as working with the Law Department. Now we have templates set up. Sometimes you have really unique situations. Each one tends to be a little bit different, and they might have different legal questions. But we're trying to have at least a template set up that we can start with as our base, and that's what we have already, and have a laid-out process for staff to go through that grant-writing process. We have an orientation that we implemented, and that was new this past year, for the grantees so that they get an overview of what the process is, what to expect. We've put goal timelines on a process workflow. So I think internally, we've made a lot of steps. Externally, some of the factors are that they are simply still getting together other financing. So some of these larger rental projects are still putting in low-income housing tax credit applications with the state. Or they may have other issues as far as, like I was saying, site control. And so they're still trying to firm up their site control. So we are looking in the future to also add additional points for projects that are ready to close within six to 12 months of award. So that would give a hand up to some of those... or a leg up to some of those projects that are ready to move faster and allow us to get that money out quicker. But it also cuts the other way as far as being able to be that first-in-money. So that would be projects that are more ready to go, have their financing together. And we're trying to implement that in the next round. And also looking at ways, like I was saying, where we're giving the Community Land Trust, we're offering some money for operating costs so that even though they may still be working on their projects, getting their projects ready to go, we're getting some money out to support their operations. So some of that, yes.
Do you have any models or best practices to draw from?
Yeah, I mean, especially with Community Land Trust, we've been working with a consultant that's really been helping us know... be aware of all those best practices and models. We've had invited in other Affordable Housing Trust Funds to learn from them, learn what they're doing. So, yeah, we're trying to take all of that into consideration. We were just recently trying to line up another person to speak at the next Commission hearing. I think we'll have them at the next one that's coming up. So, yeah, we're looking at all of those things. And it is really... with the development process, with our other projects that aren't even Affordable Housing Trust Fund, it's a long process. Development takes a long time when you're doing these large projects.
Any questions from the committee? Councilman Stokes, and then you're going to yield to Councilman Dorsey. Okay, and then Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, Kate.
Hi.
You mentioned a minute ago that six-some-million is about to open up for application for...
Yes, six million for the rental.
Rental, new construction, and maintenance of existing construction.
Correct.
When is that going to open?
It actually did already on April 27th. And the applications are due June 10th. Oh, there's a conference. There's a pre-proposal conference tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yes, at 5:00. 5:00 PM. The link is on the website. It's virtual.
Okay, cool. I feel like there's another related question. Maybe you just answered all the questions I was going to ask.
Could you announce... could you... while you're...
Yeah, go ahead.
Could you announce that at the end of this hearing?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Okay, so those applications are due by June 10th. And what is the review period for those applications?
The review period is generally... I think it's... What is our schedule? About a month for the review? Yeah, about a month. So probably within 60 days. It takes us about 30 days to do the internal review. Then it has to go through a bunch of approvals. So I would say within 60 days, you have an announcement.
That's an internal review of kind of the integrity of the applications to see that they're... make sure that they meet all the minimum standards and everything. And then they get reviewed by the...
We have a review panel.
Within the Commission.
No, it's not the Commission that does... it's inter-agency, right?
I see.
Could the two of you... the two of you come up to the... You can come up to the chairs as well, just in case there's some questions.
So it's an inter-agency review panel, has members of the Department of Planning, the Department of Housing. I think we usually have somebody from the... Do we have Comptroller's Office on that one, or is it...
And you were... Stephanie...
We need to talk to the microphone.
If you can pass her the microphone if you'd like. Does that one work?
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead. Both of you can introduce yourselves.
Yes, I'm Stephanie Estrada. I'm one of the project coordinators for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Oh, I guess you have to hand it to her. I don't think she has one.
Is there... oh, that one is...
Hi, everybody. Ebony Rector, project coordinator with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Hi, welcome.
And so this internal review process takes place. Does the Commission make recommendations from within these applications? Or is that's all internal? The Commission is pushing the fund to allocate this sum toward this priority, and then everything else is internal beyond that?
Correct.
Okay, great. And...
The Commission is advisory, helps us, advises on the policies, all of that.
Okay.
Determinations.
Great. And do you take, like, letters of support for particular applications or anything like that? Or is that part of the application?
It's not a requirement, but it is... it helps.
Okay, great. Thank you.
First of all, hello, Deputy Commissioner Edwards.
Hello, thank you.
My question is, I'm looking at page five. And I know this is actually fiscal year 2021. On your next report, will you be able to identify who these awards were? Who is the consultant? Because all I see is the amount of money. Who is... you have professional personnel cost, and then you have administrative cost. I think, being transparent, we bet on the next report because I don't... that's just a dollar figure. My other question is, it's a lot of money. We had a surplus. And I'm always concerned about equity. We always talk about the equity in the city. And for the last two years, we've been talking about equity. And I would like to know, on your next report, for this city to be 60 to 65% African-American, I want to know what the equity is. How are you giving out contracts in your next report for 2022? I think that should be in the report also. Because these numbers and boxes does not address equity. They're just numbers. And my other question is, has housing now hired somebody to oversee their equity program? Because from the last time I talked, there was nobody there yet. And my question... and the reason why I'm asking is, how can we apply equity if we don't have the staff to watch what's going out the door?
Yeah. I think that Commissioner Kennedy could speak to that better. I'm sorry that I can't speak to whether or not we've hired some... I mean, I know that we haven't... I haven't met anybody. We haven't hired. I know that it's in process. But as far as giving more specifics on the names of the consultants, we can definitely do that. And a breakdown of the... I guess you're saying kind of the racial breakdown of the actual awardees. Is that what you're asking for?
Well, whatever the awardees are. I mean, if you want to use the equity part piece, but for awards, let's say $150,000. It's not in the report who received the rewards. And the consultant... who is the consultant?
The awards...
$1,000, I mean. This just had the amount that was, I guess, paid out, program services. And then you had personnel costs. What is that? I don't know what that means. $121,000 administrative costs. So you managed to spend $308,000, but all it has is a bunch of numbers.
Yeah, if you go a few...
And if we're being transparent and talk about equity, it should be in the report.
Okay. Yeah, if you go to the... further along in the report, starting on page eight, where we have the funding commitments, this actually is the narrative that supports all those numbers. And it gives you a breakdown of exactly who the awardees were. So it's the consultant. You have Enterprise, Community Partners. That's one of our consultants. That's for the Inclusionary Housing Program. Grounded Solutions is the other one that I mentioned earlier. And that is for our Community Land Trust. And then we also have a consultant, which is the Share Baltimore, which is working with the Community Land Trust, kind of in a coordinating role. That's another consultant that we've had onboard. So you have to kind of look at them both together. I mean, I think we can work on making the tables up front more clear. But this supporting information in the background gives you a lot of those details, I believe, that you were asking for.
I have one more question. When you hire a consultant, are you continuing to sign and using that consultant every year? Or you... is that consultant that you use, are they contracted for a certain amount of years? Or you're just renewing the contract?
Yes, they've been contracted for two years now.
So after the two years up, then you have some other consultants that want to come and be interested in consulting? Or you just renew that consultant after the two years is up?
We just renewed it.
Put your mic a little closer.
I'm sorry. We just renewed it.
Yes, especially for the Community Land Trust because it's a new program. There were not a lot of consultants that could actually do it. Grounded Solutions was the number one. Actually, other consultants referred them to us to use them. So for Grounded Solutions, we have not looked outside of that.
And that was an extension, but they hadn't used up all of the funding, right? So it was a no-cost extension. So it was the same amount of money. It was extending the time. And I did just get a text from Commissioner Kennedy that they are currently interviewing for the Equity Officer position.
Okay, but I'd still like to see that report. And maybe you can let us know about the equity staff that's over in housing because I feel uncomfortable if you don't have the staff there, how we address equity over in the housing department. So thank you.
So I guess just in line to kind of sum up with what Councilmember Stokes had mentioned, if you want to mention anything extra as far as equity about the Commission members, what you were looking for in making that membership in that team as far as, you know, the equity piece.
Yeah, it's actually laid out in the legislation exactly who needs to be on the Commission. And there's representatives of people who have received housing assistance... Housing vouchers. There's also somebody... yeah. Stephanie's going to look up the specifics. But there are very specific roles that have to be filled, and they really do look towards equity to make sure that the Commission is made up of a variety of representatives that would have different interests in this process.
Can you beat on a regular basis, monthly?
Monthly, generally. Yeah, there's been months where we skipped, but yeah, monthly.
Is that helpful, Councilmember Stokes? Is there moving... is there moving forward?
And I will just... I mean, it is really forefront in everything that we do. We are always looking towards equity in all of our work with the impact investment areas, with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I know that that was one of the most important positions for Commissioner Kennedy to fill when she became official. So I just know that she is in... that is in the works, and it's very important to her.
Just one comment. But it's been two years.
It's not been two years since she was...
We've been talking about equity on this council for, I know, two years. And the Housing Department is still working on it. That's my concern. It's not fully staffed. Am I right? And y'all still looking for somebody. Am I correct?
Right. Yeah, and we do have an Equity Officer currently. We have Tammy Hawley, who's been acting as our Equity Officer. But we are working to hire a full-time Equity Officer.
Thank you. Since we do have 2021s, has anything changed on this map that might be noted from this fiscal year 2021?
This is in the report that she sent you.
Yeah, this is the annual report. The last page has...
Yeah, so that's all the awardees are listed on the last page. And since... did we have another round after? We had the Community Land Trust round, but we didn't have another rental round. This will be the one coming up.
Like in terms of locations?
Yeah, there'll be additional Community Land Trust projects that we awarded after this that will be included in the next annual... And then now we're about to award these rental... the rental round that's out on the street. So that will be included on the map as well. So there'll be new projects.
And are you including that on Code Map as well?
Hmm?
Are you including that on Code Map?
On Code Map, yeah. Oh, do we have these projects listed on Code Map? We could do that. We could add it to Code Map as a layer. I don't think it currently is.
That would be good.
I do have the breakdown of the Commission members now, if you'd like to hear that.
Sure, go ahead.
It's small.
How many... it's... what's the number of the...
I think we... yeah, it's total of 12. We have somebody... so these are the charter requirements. Somebody experienced in the field of housing, community development, planning, social services. We have a member of the lending community. We have somebody from HCD. Resident who rents and is at 30% or less of area median income. Resident homeowner and is at 50% or less of area median income. Homeowner who has received assistance through an affordable home ownership program. Resident who has received rental assistance. A social service provider. Representative of Homeless Service Board. Low-income fair housing advocate. Nonprofit affordable housing developer. Home Builders or Realtor Association. And I think... yeah, that's it. What's this last one? Different? I think there's one extra position that isn't laid out specifically.
I think that would be also helpful to add those in your annual report. And that can also kind of address somewhat, as with most of the equity issues and questions that have been raised from the committee.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. We can definitely add that.
Any... Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few questions. Can you, at some point, get us also the racial and ethnic backgrounds of everybody on the Commission? That would be super helpful as well. And also, can you clarify this map? I don't...
It matches up with the chart behind it.
So this is a map of the projects...
That have been awarded through the... through the NOFA.
Through... okay, so the first set, basically, of awardees? Not those that are committed, but... or these are the committed ones?
They are committed.
So this is... this is the map of all of the projects that have been funded through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to date?
Well, it doesn't include the Community Land Trust round that was the past fall because that was after...
Sure, after this timeframe.
It's everything that was between... yeah.
Got it. Okay, I just wanted to...
Through fiscal year '21.
Just wanted to be super clear about where that was. I think the GEDCO one actually was in a different district. It's marked in my district, but they didn't do that development here. But anyway, their offices are in my district. No, that's okay. So I had a couple of other questions. So it was my understanding from last year's hearing that there was going to be a larger public planning process for the next couple of rounds, but to the spending priorities? And when is that going to begin?
A larger public planning process?
My understanding from the Commissioner was that, you know, when we first created the Housing Trust Fund, which I was intimately involved in, then we, you know, the department went through a huge process to come up with the original spending plan. It was my understanding that another process like that was going to happen. Is that correct?
Well, I... we need to discuss that internally. I haven't... I haven't... we haven't talked about that recently.
Okay. Because if I understood incorrectly, let me know, obviously. That wasn't... that isn't in your plans at the moment.
Not at the moment.
Particularly as we're now going into the One Baltimore process. And we've been having conversations about a comprehensive housing strategy and a comprehensive housing plan, that the work of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund should actually be included, you know? And given the needs that we have in housing, should be reflected in how we, you know, spend the dollars in accordance with this larger plan. So that might be what should...
I know that we've definitely talked about that, that broader plan, the housing plan, but not specifically about doing the...
Okay, so it may be integrated into that, and I may have misunderstood. Okay, if you could help me clarify, that would be great.
I'll clarify.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So we'll use Mr. McCarthy's project as an example, if that's all right. The initial funding was $180,000. How... what's the total cost of your project, if you don't mind my asking you? mind my asking you?
2.3 million.
2.3 million, okay. So how did the trust fund determine that 180,000 would be what we allocated to him? Did he ask for that, did he ask for more? I'm sure he asked for more, I know you asked for more.
No.
Come on, Dan, you gotta ask for more.
He has now, but at that time, that's what he needed.
Yeah, yeah, I, it's up to Madam Chair, I'm totally breaking the rules, asking you a question, I'm very sorry about that. So I, the, so I'm just curious, like, what's the, is it just determined based on what people are asking for? Are you saying in the NOFAs, and forgive me, I haven't read through a NOFA recently, that it can only be 25% of a project, what?
33% of a project.
33?
33% of the total development cost.
Okay.
And yes, what they asked for is normally within those lines, and if we have it, we give it to them, what they ask, I don't, we haven't had not one project that we lowered the amount.
Okay, so the NOFAs basically are, we're saying, the trust fund is saying that we want to be able to be the first in for the first third, that's actually really amazing.
Yeah, and, but there is a limit of up to 750,000 is what we had before, and we've raised that to a million for this next round.
And then, did you have a related?
Oh, Councilmember Bullock.
Okay, I have a, okay, I have a couple more, but I can yield, if that's okay.
Go ahead, Councilman Bullock.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the sponsor, Councilmember Ramos, for bringing this resolution. My questions are just pretty broad, based upon the narrative and some of the numbers that came out earlier. So one, just around the percentage of funds, well, two questions, one around the percentage of funds used for Community Land Trust, can you talk about how and why that percentage might have shifted over, over time? And then, the other question is, just looking at the differences between what's been generated, what's been allocated or committed, and then what's been spent, and have there been any difficulties that you've seen in terms of getting the money out the door? So if you could, if you could address those points, I'd be very happy.
All right, so the first point was about the switch, the change kind of in the percentages for the Community Land Trust. So our original spending plan for this year was pretty close to that 39%. We have seen that there, it is more of a need as far as our applications that we're receiving for the NOFAs, the rental side has had much higher need, many more applicants are coming in through the rental than are coming through the Community Land Trust. You only have, right now, about five, five Community Land Trust total, maybe there's six in the city? And so we've just been getting way more applications, and we're not able to fund, we're maybe funded 50% of the rental applications in the last round, where we funded 100% of the Community Land Trust applications that came in, the ones that met the threshold.
With money left over.
With money left over, right, so it just didn't, it seems to make sense to follow the need, and the need is in the rental, and you do get more units in those rental, so we want to make a balance, we know, we recognize that the Community Land Trusts are extremely important, we want affordable, long-term, permanent, affordable housing, but we also want to get as many units as possible.
Thank you, that's helpful. And then, then the other piece, just in terms of, again, the money that's been generated, and then what's been committed, and then what's out the door, any challenges that you've seen in terms of getting the money to applicants and getting out the door?
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot of the things I spoke to earlier, just that a lot of the applicants, there's been different legal questions, so that was one issue, some of the things we had to sort out with the Community Land Trusts, but then also, some of the applicants are still identifying properties, so they're getting site control of the properties, some of the applicants don't yet have all their financing, so until they have all their financing, we would only do that 25% advanced payment, because they can't start construction on the project until you know that the entire project can be funded. So it's a combination of those issues, and just making sure that the project is ready to go before we put significant amounts of the trust fund money into the project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks to my colleagues for all your great questions. The other question I had was around the HUBS program, and the money that's been used from the trust fund for the HUBS program, which I think is awesome, that's one of the reasons why we put the whole thing together. Can you tell me if some of that is going to operating? Because we have a backlog of seniors trying to get home repair, and it's not for lack of mon, well, it is, we always need more money, but it's also, we need more staff, we need more support, so is some of that money from the trust fund going to it, or is the, for operating, or is the ARPA money that we got for HUBS going to operations?
I would have to look into that as far as operations, I think all of our, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund money is going to actual money to seniors, yeah, so I don't know if there's some ARPA money that would be going to operating, I'd have to.
Do we know how many seniors have already been assisted? Since we, we talked about units produced, which I appreciate, and I was wondering if.
I don't know if we have, do you have the number on?
We don't have the number on how many seniors received, it's just the amount that has been gone out the door.
But we can get, we can get an update on that.
It's 659.
But there's other funding sources for HUBS, so that's one thing to be aware of, that, yeah.
Understood, and we want to get, use the ARPA money first, got it. But I also want to make sure that, because we do have a high demand for that, so if there's a way to, you know, get that number for us, that would be.
Yes, we can check on that and get that number.
Yeah, no, that would be, that would be super amazing. And then, I have a question about, you had mentioned that the homeownership units that are committed, 20 units and 50 units, is that only through the CLT? Didn't we have a NOFA for affordable homeownership?
It was only through the Community Land Trust that we have affordable homeownership.
Affordable homeownership writ large, because, I mean, we need all the tools in the toolbox, so I'm curious if that was in the spending plan.
It has not been thus far, but I can definitely consider it, I think.
And we've been asked about it, but, no.
I'm sure, I'm sure, and, because there is a huge, a huge need for all of it, and there, there's a role for, you know, again, all the tools in the toolbox. And I was wondering, and maybe I can ask Mr. Good after the hearing, if you don't know, one of the, as I've been talking with community development organizations across the city on some of the work we're doing on vacant properties, they've actually been having great partnerships with the Community Land Trusts to be able to have a full, you know, a full range of tools to be able to make sure that they're doing both market rate, affordable rental, affordable homeownership, in addition to the CLTs. Is that something that you've been encouraging to do? Because I think that's, that's great if they're all, you know, we're all working together, and they're working with a community development organization who's been able to do the, you know, work fundraising, and has also done work in the planning stages in the neighborhoods and things like that.
Yeah, so, sorry, I think I missed the first part, but you're saying, like, encouraging partnerships between other community development organizations and the Community Land Trusts? Yes, definitely, we have some of those, and then the round that we're working on, there's some partnerships, and we've seen, talking with Grounded Solutions and other areas, other best practices models, that that is a model that really has been used nationwide.
Yeah, it's super effective, so I'm glad to see.
It's actually stated in the NOFA, that we encourage them.
It is stated in the NOFA that they have to do the partnership, okay.
That we encourage them to team up with the developers.
Yeah, no, that, that makes a lot of sense, I appreciate that. And the last piece was just like, as my colleagues were saying, a little bit more details in the annual report would be helpful in terms of under-the-line item, the numbers and that kind of thing, would be super great. And then, it was my understanding, and I, from the budget director, that we did, the trust fund made a ton more money this year, because the market went insane, which nobody anticipated.
Right.
And so, I just thought it was a lower number, because it looks like, you're, you're saying in 2022, so far, it was 21 million that came in so far?
Yes.
That's substantial, I mean, that's exactly how we wanted it to happen when we came up with the funding source.
Right.
Knowing that, and the, looking in the budget book, the, they're anticipating the market to go down in the next round, has the commission started looking at ways to continue to keep this funding up to 20 million, which is what we wanted? Or, you know, is that something that they haven't talked about yet?
We haven't really talked about that, you mean, like, looking at other funding sources beyond?
Or expanding what we have now.
Expanding, yeah. That hasn't been a discussion we've been having lately, so we don't have any plans for expansion of the funding yet.
Okay.
I do have a couple of, some of the items you asked before, because like I said, Commissioner Kennedy is watching.
She's watching.
So she's texting as well, and she did clarify that there is no operating funding for HUBS, and it's not, not ARPA either, neither.
Neither?
Neither. All of the money is for direct repairs and construction, and it's all, yeah.
Okay, thanks for that clarity.
And then she also clarified that as far as the planning process, the larger planning process that she may have spoke with you about, that that would be in June and July.
So that is in conjunction with the comprehensive planning process, or is it June and July, where we will be doing public hearings around the priorities for the trust fund?
I have to.
I know she'll text us in a minute with that answer.
See if she'll text in a few minutes.
Okay. Because that was my question, because I certainly want to have.
Right, see if it's coordinated.
As possible, being able to join us for those conversations. And I do hope that, you know, we're looking at, you know, the range, the whole purpose, and why we started the Affordable Housing Trust Fund with our colleagues from all over, and, you know, the Community Land Trust, rental housing, everybody came together for that, is to have a wide range of options available, to be able to have maximum units and help most, a lot of families, so, and, and also make sure that we have affordability and perpetuity, that was one of the big things as well, so I appreciate that you've been working on it. Madam Chair, my last question, if you don't mind, is around the, the work that has been done on the rental side, you had mentioned the 30% and then the 50% of area median income. Actually, my, here's my question, is the, the inclusionary housing piece, that study isn't done yet, so is there?
Correct.
I know that we introduced a bill, so, and I haven't heard back from Enterprise if there's any further work that's going to be done on that report?
Yeah.
Because we are running out of time, we have to pass an extension, or we have to pass something by June of 2022.
Yeah.
So what is the, I mean, we'll, we've been working on amendments, and we're trying to bring the bill back to do work on it, but I haven't seen any other work done on the report, so what's that process?
I know that they are going to be wrapping up the report, I do not know the timeline for how long that's going to take, but I know recently I've seen that they are about to start working on that finalizing of the report, but I'd have to check in and get you a date on when it's actually expected to be completed.
Yeah, because otherwise, the whole program falls apart by June, June 30, 2022.
Right, unless we extend the current.
So, right, and, you know, we're working on amendments to try to get my bill back out, and we can try to make that happen, but.
Yeah, I think there was partly with the bill coming out, where they were paused on being responsive to the bill as well, and I think now we've passed them to go ahead and finish it, finalize it, so we'll have that coming out soon, but I don't know the exact timeline, but I will get that to you.
If you can get that to me, that would be super helpful, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, appreciate it.
Sure. So, again, at the public hearing, we had Commissioner Kennedy speak both for housing and community development, and also the Housing Authority, but I just wanted to make point that Crystal Hypolite?
Yes.
Special Assistant of Government Relations for Housing Authority, I didn't know if you wanted to make a comment, listening to everything, or anything to add?
No.
Okay. So at this point, oh, I do have one question, and then we'll have finance. Do they schedule education, do you schedule educational events on a regular basis, or will you be planning some educational community events on this whole entire subject?
We haven't had any in the past, we've been talking about it more recently with the commission, several of the commission members have brought that up as a need, so I think we're going to be looking at it, exploring what we could offer.
Because I do know that there are other CDCs and that are, have a lot of interests in this subject matter, and for their communities, so I highly recommend that you consider that. Now, also, at the hearing, we, we didn't receive a report from the Finance Department at the first hearing, but today we do have a report for the work session, so I'm sure we're, the committee is anxious in listening to your report. Mr. Ponte?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Pedro Ponte, Assistant Director of the Department of Finance, there's not much I can, I could add to the presentation that the HCD prepared, but I just want to clarify a certain things, as you know, the Finance Department, more specifically the Bureau of Revenue Collections, is responsible for collecting the surcharge on behalf of the city, and that represents probably 80% of the total proceeds that go to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I wanted to say that because we are talking about $46 million in proceeds, that's not entirely coming from the surcharge, is, what, my, my, my record shows that we have collected 36 million as of March, since the beginning of the, of this program, and that is about 1,000 transactions that have been occurring since fiscal 2019, and definitely, most of this money is coming from activities processed since July 1st, 2021, so most of the, roughly half of this money is fiscal 2022 activity, and I'd be more than happy to answer any question you might have.
Okay. Any questions to finance from the committee? Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pedro, you said that the receipts were actually 36 million and not 46 million, did I understand you correctly?
36.1 as of the end of March.
The end of March for the fiscal year or for total?
Total.
So.
17.8 for the fiscal year, 2022.
17.8 for the fiscal year?
Yep.
That's different than the HCD was saying.
Yeah, and, and again, I think they are reporting figures for all sources, not only the surcharge.
No, they said, the surcharge money was 21 million. What was? And he's saying that it's 17 million, 17.8.
Is that the revenue?
You need the microphone.
Microphone.
He might be including just the tax revenue, we also have the bond money from the city.
The city's contribution. The city's contribution is 7 million a year.
No, it's not 7 million, it was 4.2 this year.
Right, it was 4.2 this year, but that was in, so that, so you included that in the fiscal '22?
Yes.
Yeah, so that revenue collected does include that.
Okay.
Yeah, that adds up, 22, 17.8, 4.2 adds to 22.
Yeah, yeah, so that answers the question there, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that math lesson for us. Thanks.
Any other questions for finance? Okay, moving along, we're anxious to, in getting this fiscal year 2022, and hoping that you can add a lot of the suggestions that we recommended, and I know that there will probably be continued dialogue, especially with the sponsor of the bill, and if there's no, yes, Councilman Stokes?
I have a question for finance, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's okay.
I know housing, Affordable Trust Fund, we're talking how slow it's been getting the money out, is that, finance, are you, is that on your end or who end? Because a lot of times when the money is getting out real slow, who is it, is it getting to you and moving slow, or you getting it to them and it's moving slow? Just for some clarification.
Finance Department processes the surcharge on a daily basis, and that money goes immediately to an account number that is for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so the revenues are coming on a daily basis. The delay is probably related to the budget, how the funds for each of the projects being granted, but it's not necessarily the way the money is coming in. Thank you.
Is there an approval from finance? Do you?
No, finance doesn't have any intervention in this process, other than collecting the revenue.
Everything just goes into the account?
Yes.
Basically, okay. Any other questions? Is, I make a motion to move the bill?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ramos, Chair Middleton, yes, Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway absent, Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Glover absent, Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Stokes?
And are we including the request that we asked for also?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. This bill moves to second reader at the next council meeting and I just want to thank everyone for attending today's hearing. And the committee is scheduled to meet after Mother's Day, so to all the mothers, have a wonderful Mother's Day.